The Monday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Marquette City Commission is now called to order at six P M. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Otteway?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Schlegel?
Here.
And Mayor Hanley?
Here. Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion on the agenda? Commissioner Davis?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
And a second? Commissioner Mayor?
Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion?
No comments.
Hearing none, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. I have no announcements tonight, which brings us to boards and committees. Commissioners, do I have a motion? Commissioner Otteway?
I move to appoint Dylan Klein to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending two fifteen twenty-eight.
And a second? Commissioner Larson?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Nope, just thank you for serving border zoning appeals. It's certainly a necessary service to our city.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to our first public comment portion of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. When you come up, please address the commission and state your name and physical address. Do we have anyone for public comment tonight?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Chelsea Wilkinson. I'm the Executive Director at Room at the Inn. Address is four four seven West Washington. I'm here again to express my deep concern about ordinance twenty-five dash oh-two, which would criminalize the act of sleeping outdoors or in vehicles on public property, including the use of tents, hammocks, sleeping bags, and other basic survival gear. This ordinance, as written, is vague and punitive and will disproportionately harm people who have no other safe place to go. I want to thank the members of the city and of the commission who've already spent a significant amount of time with me trying to understand the issue and considering alternative solutions. But there is still much work to be done. Today, I'm asking you all to vote to table this ordinance as written to give our teams more time to make necessary adjustments. Unsheltered individuals in our community already face immense barriers, from a lack of affordable housing to the long waitlist for our available shelter beds in our community. Rather than penalizing people for the act of trying to survive, we should be exploring thoughtful and intentional approach, much like the ones that we've seen in Missoula, Montana. In Missoula, they have adopted a more compassionate approach by ensuring that unsheltered individuals camping on city property are provided with clear and defined rules. They allow camping in designated spaces with a permit system. They have a time, place, and manner regulation to ensure safety, and they provide essential support like trash collection and access to bathroom facilities. These practices give people dignity and respect without unnecessarily criminalizing survival. This is the kind of model that we should be looking at, duplicating as we address homelessness in our community. Missoula also places an emphasis on collaboration with service providers, and this is something that we are desperately trying to facilitate here in Marquette. Our shelter is stretched to capacity, and a lack of available affordable housing is a key barrier to the stability for many of our guests. I ask the city commission to consider partnering with local organizations and service providers to create designated spaces for temporary camping or safe parking sites where unsheltered individuals can access services and have a place to stay safely. I have several examples here for those efforts in Missoula and would encourage you all to check out their municipal code twelve point sixty. You know, I considered inviting some of our unhoused residents to speak tonight, but I will not ask anyone who is struggling to find safety and stability to stand before you and explain why they deserve to be treated with dignity. They already carry the weight of their circumstances, and I'm asking each of you to perhaps come and volunteer for a breakfast or a dinner before you make a vote. See what they're up against. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, we cannot have that as much as I would like to encourage it. We cannot have any outbursts like that during the meeting. I'm sorry. Continue.
Hi, I'm Rue. My main point is that instead of-
I'm sorry, can you state your full name and physical address?
Rebecca Rusinski.
And your physical address?
Five nine Elder Drive. That shouldn't be counted on my time. Thank you. My main point is that instead of offering solutions, which is complicated and difficult to do, I'm hearing that we are proposing to cut off even more resources to the people in our community who need resources the most. Postpone this ordinance. It's not about rewriting or rewording a document. It's about rethinking the motivations behind the proposed procedures. Our community is staring itself in a mirror on this issue, and we can all agree that it is very clear that we need to take careful and do consideration as we proceed. At the very least, we would like to postpone, once again, any finalization of any ordinance until we can address the real loss of life and the further loss of quality of life that will result from this, as we also address the ways that we could harness this situation for growth, even economically, rather than overtaxing an already overworked police force. As a person who was unhoused for almost a year in Marquette, who was born in the Kewona, who grew up in Marquette, moved to Wisconsin and brought back a skill set to a local business and made that business grow, and then who just fell for a while, I can say that it took real community connections and a belief that I was believed in in order for me to succeed again. I had to borrow an address from a local business in order to qualify for a job in my field again. I slept in my car and at a local business, but only because I already had connections and relationships built on trust within our community that's privileged under housedness, and it was still terrifying. Oh, what I learned from this is that taking more away from an unhoused part of our community is more expensive and is an ill-equipped way to handle things. I barely climbed out, even with an entire crew of people believing in me. It was dangerous for me to be unhoused, and having unhoused persons also makes us feel in danger. The situations that often accompany this are complex, so let's not try to oversimplify with regulations before offering real solutions. What I am proposing is that we think about solutions, about systems for education and growth. You cannot pull yourself up by the bootstraps if you don't even have boots. Please, let's take a moment for intelligence and solution-based-
Time is up.
Using of funding and shame on it if this goes through.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hello, my name is Silas McNeely. I currently reside on Northern Michigan University's campus at fourteen oh one Presque Isle Ave. I would like to stay as someone who has lived here in the beautiful Upper Peninsula for the last almost ten years, who came up through Marquette Public Schools, having elected to come to Marquette from a community outside our city limits for those schools, who loves the ethos and the people of this beautiful city, that ordinance twenty-five oh-two is not in line with any of the principles that I find represent Marquette. And moreover, that it represents a simple myopic lack of understanding of the problem and a misguided attempt to Band-Aid a bullet hole, so to speak. I find the fact that the Commissioners and that Mayor Hanley would consider moving on such a resolution without having the necessary context or, in my opinion, at all undertaking the necessary due diligence, is simply deplorable. And I know that Marquette has produced better elected officials than this, and I simply am disappointed in the actions of this commission. Moreover, I implore every member of this commission to consider truly who they are and truly what they represent before they criminalize someone who has lost everything physical in their life, threaten to confiscate that person's last physical belongings, and potentially subject them to criminal liability for having come upon the worst stretch of their entire decades upon this earth. It is simply despicable to consider that that would occur to anyone in our community, our beautiful community with this collective ethos of dignity, of understanding, of intelligence. Thank you all for the work that you do as Commissioners. This is not a simple problem to solve. Obviously, I know that we have intelligent people in this community who would have solved it if it were. And I ask you simply to embrace the resources of our community before undertaking a short-sighted, short-term solution to a problem that cannot be solved with a blanket ban or with any other similar action. We need a robust, thoughtful, carefully planned solution for these vulnerable individuals that does not criminalize them for having a difficult life, as all of us have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ian Watson. I'm representing five one three High Street, and I'm a member of the Marquette community. I just wanted to say thank you to the Commissioners that took the time to meet with me this week. It's very nice to see you guys again. I'm a little bit concerned about the current wording of ordinance twenty-five oh-two. This is because I believe the vague nature of this wording leaves too much room for various interpretations of the law and its application. And I believe that banning all persons from occupying city-owned property or city-controlled property overnight will have harmful effects on people experiencing homelessness in this community. If local facilities are at capacity and cannot accommodate members of our community in need of support, their only option is often to sleep on city-owned or city-controlled property. In order to protect the most vulnerable of our community, I believe that this ordinance should be further reviewed so that it does not cause undue hardship to people in need of support. I urge the board to table this ordinance so that it may be reviewed and developed further before being brought to a vote. While we, as a community, prioritize safety and potentially regulating tourism, as I know that is a concern here today, we must also find an appropriate balance that both protects and serves those that are currently experiencing hardships. To do this, I believe we should write in specific criteria to this ordinance to protect our unhoused population from additional hardships. For example, we could write in an exception for unhoused individuals currently working with social or nonprofit services to find housing. We could apply this ordinance seasonally to regulate tourism in the summer, but still allow grace for unhoused individuals that must sleep in a car to escape the elements in the winter. We can reevaluate our categorization of paraphernalia to prevent individuals' personal property from being disposed of, and I'm sure Room at the Inn and other organizations will have several other recommendations for you. I urge the board to continue working with local organizations, such as Room at the Inn, to develop reasonable parameters before finalizing this legislation. I'll take my last minute to say we have a beautiful community here in Marquette, and it has been an honor to be part of it for the last four years. But I think we should take a moment to think about what exactly community is. It's not just the fact that people are physically around you and share the space with you. Community is a commitment to people that you share the world with. Community is about making sacrifices and asking the people around you what they need and then being there to support them, not potentially making people's lives who are already struggling significantly harder. Thank you for your consideration, and I hope to see this ordinance tabled today.
Hello, my name is Daisy Ray, and I am an employee at Room at the Inn, and I am representing four four seven West Washington Street. I would like to thank you all for your time here. And with that, as a community member, I urge the city to reconsider ordinance twenty-five oh-two. While the intent may be to address public nuisances, the ordinance disproportionately targets and punishes the city's most vulnerable residents. Vulnerable people are not nuisances. We, as a community, can do better instead of punishing individuals for the mere act of existing in public spaces. Public spaces belong to the people. Denying access based on housing status undermines the principle of equality. Ordinance twenty-five oh-two is a step in the wrong direction. It does not solve homelessness. It hides it, and even then so creates more barriers for the people experiencing homelessness in our community. Homeless people are also our neighbors and should be treated as such. True progress requires empathy, investment, and inclusive policymaking that uplifts rather than it modularizes. I urge the city to reconsider this ordinance and work with advocates, service providers, and affected individuals to create real solutions. It has been an honor to work with the homeless population. They are our neighbors, and I thank you for the time. We can come up with better solutions.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening. I'm Will Sullivan, six three zero Forest Park Drive in Marquette. I'm a senior attorney with the Marquette County Public Defender's Office and Chair of the Board at Room at the Inn. I was born and raised in Marquette and have been living and practicing law in the city for over ten years. Ordinance twenty-five oh-two will have severe negative impacts on the rights of unhoused persons in the city of Marquette. Recently, the U.S. Supreme Court issued an opinion in the case of Grants Pass v. Johnson in which the court held that an ordinance that bans sleeping or camping in public was not inherently unconstitutional. However, this proposed ordinance is far more expansive and intrusive than the ordinance that was adopted by Grants Pass. One major example that I noticed is that this ordinance renders anybody within its application subject to seizure of their property without a right to a hearing or other due process. Paragraph D of the proposed ordinance provides that if any person in violation of this ordinance refuses to vacate the public property or remove their items after being directed to do so by law enforcement, the city police department is authorized to remove such individuals and dispose of any tents, shelters, or related paraphernalia in violation. There is no opportunity provided for any sort of hearing to raise defenses or argue justifications for why a person's belongings should not be summarily destroyed. I do not know what paraphernalia is related to being homeless. Could be a cellphone, could be a sleeping bag, jacket and mittens, maybe a pet. But under this ordinance, it is whatever any given police officer thinks it is. Without any sort of judicial review before seizure and disposal, that's the only opinion that matters. There is no provision like this in the Grants Pass ordinance. That ordinance provides that seized property must be held for at least thirty days and shall, within that time, be released to its owner. One does not live in a tent in the woods in Marquette by choice. Our neighbors to whom this ordinance would apply find themselves in this situation because they're desperate and they have nowhere else to go. To seize and dispose of the property they have in their immediate possession is to seize and dispose of everything they have. Again, cellular phones, which contain contact information for family, caseworkers and employers, essential documents that allow them to seek work or access benefits, any other items of priceless sentimental value. They could even serve jail time for contempt if they are assessed a fine that they cannot pay. So this community I've grown up in and now live in, I hope, has some more respect for its people than their rights than what this ordinance provides. So I would ask the court to decline to adopt ordinance twenty-five oh-two as written. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening, Commission. My name is Heidi Kirchner. I live at thirty-one twenty-five Wright Street. I work in our community as a street outreach worker at Room at the Inn, and I'm here to ask you to not follow through with the ordinance twenty-five oh-two. And I'm also here tonight because I believe that making it illegal to sleep outside or in a car is not only inhumane, but it is also counterproductive. I work every day with people who are doing their best to survive with the incredibly limited options that we have up here in Marquette. Many are working, many are seniors, veterans, or people who have severe disabilities. They're not criminals. These people are our neighbors, and they're already struggling, and these people are already in crisis. With the insane rent prices and the lack of a rent cap that exists up here, any one of us are one step away from being in a position of homelessness. However, we are also in a position of privilege if we don't have the outside as our first option, and many of my clients do not have that luxury. When we criminalize where someone sleeps and take away their possessions, we don't solve homelessness. We push people further into it. We make it harder for them to access services, hold on to jobs, or feel safe enough to even come forward for the help that they so desperately need. Instead of punishing people for being in crisis and needing help, we should invest in housing solutions, mental health support, and outreach services. We have a choice as a community and as humankind. We can respond with compassion, or we can respond with punishment, and I'm here asking tonight that we choose compassion.
Good evening, City Commission. My name is Edward Murray. I reside at six forty East Division Street in Ishpeming. I just came before you tonight because last year I was homeless, and when I went to Room at the Inn to try and find a bed, they had no capacity. So they provided me a sleeping bag and a tent, and I found a spot, not realizing that it was going to rain that night. I wasn't able to put up the tent, but because I had the tent, I was able to wrap it over myself and keep dry. I want the city to consider not criminalizing staying dry and staying safe and think about the implications of what not allowing a sleeping bag or a tent would mean for you or anybody else having to stay outside with no other means of shelter. It also doesn't seem right to criminalize somebody trying to stay alive. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Tony Martin Boyle, four oh one West Michigan Street. First, I want to thank everyone who showed up tonight. There's some great stuff on the agenda, but of course, we're here to talk about the proposed ordinance twenty-five oh-two. I'm here to condemn that ordinance, overnight occupation of public property. It's shameful that this ordinance has been recommended for adoption. It's nothing more than a backdoor ban on being homeless. The language of this ordinance is worse than the quote-unquote camping ban passed by Grants Pass, Oregon. In fact, it is far more broad and vague than Grants Pass ordinance, which is worth noting that despite winning over the conservative Supreme Court in the city of Grants Pass v. Johnson, that city's ordinance remains under court-imposed injunction for discrimination against unhoused and disabled persons. It doesn't matter that the official marketing pitch is to regulate tourism. Ordinance twenty-five oh-two would give the city and police additional tools to target and criminalize homeless residents. A tool does not exist to sit on a shelf. A tool exists to be used. There is only one logical outcome here. Our unhoused neighbors will be pushed further into the margins and will suffer further trauma. It is an act of cruelty to fine a person for being unable to afford or access housing. It is an act of cruelty to steal an unhoused person's shelter. Yet, this is the human cost that this draft ordinance deems acceptable. To put forward this ordinance while we face an escalating housing crisis and unprecedented economic upheaval shows such an appalling disconnect with the material conditions of Marquette's working class. Over one in five Marquette residents live in poverty. Living out of your car is often the difference between having a job and starvation. As someone who has opened up their home many times to keep homeless friends off the street, I urge you to vote no on ordinance twenty-five oh-two. It will criminalize an act of survival that so many of my peers have and continue to rely upon. Everyone needs sleep. Anyone can become homeless, even me, even you. There's not much difference, not at all. Also sidebar, past five years, my house, taxes have gone up maximum amount every year, and the valuation is at a hundred thirty percent more than five years ago. It's unsustainable growth. The bottom is falling out. Like, we're here because this could be us. So I urge you, I implore you, look within your hearts. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Emily Rake. I represent two three seven two Bowden Street. I'm also the Assistant Director at the Janson House, one four six West Spring Street. So I work with the homeless, and I can say with certainty that they do not deserve to freeze outside. They do not deserve the penalization of survival. And I can say they are our friends. They are our families. We would not do this to our friends and families. As I say, as a woman, I before have slept in my car for safety. I've done it. Probably most of this room have slept in their car before. I did it out of safety, not because I was trying to be malicious or bad, because I feared for my life once, and I wanted to sleep in a locked car. It would have been illegal here if this goes through. So I'm making this about myself right now, but I am also making it about the men I work with because they have had no other options before. I hear story after story after story, not just from those men, but from people I have to turn down on the phone, telling them, "We don't have space for you." Room at the Inn might have space for you, but as we heard, "Oh, kind of full." Everywhere is full. So obviously, it is a housing issue in Marquette, but it's a housing issue everywhere. So what are we going to decide to do? Make things illegal and inhumane, or look at more housing? Make things illegal and inhumane, or look at more housing? It's what, what do we want to spend the energy, the time, our attention on? Do we want to keep the police busy pulling people out of cars and taking their belongings? Or do we want people under a roof? That's the question. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Kim Offenbacher, 106 Coles Drive. I am the Interim Executive Director of Superior Connections RCO. We're a local nonprofit that provides supportive services to individuals impacted by substance use. I am sympathetic to the city's plight and concerns of safety regarding both tourism and the impact of homelessness in the city property, but I urge you to move forward with caution and compassion in regards to ordinance number 25-02. Some of the top causes of homelessness are poverty, unemployment, lack of affordable housing, medical debt, mental illness, and substance use issues. When people are experiencing homelessness, sometimes a terrible option, like sleeping in a car or a tent on public property, is still the best and safest option available. I hate to see a situation where we further criminalize the people who most need our help and make it harder for them to be eligible for employment and housing in the future. Room at the Inn does an amazing and tireless job at sheltering, and I have the utmost respect for Executive Director Chelsea Wilkinson, but there are simply more people experiencing homelessness in Marquette than available beds, especially in the winter months. If this ordinance passes as-is without protections and diversion plans in place, I am afraid that is who will be hurt the most as a result. I also want to say, having worked with this population here in Marquette for the last three and a half years, as a community health worker, you will find that most of the people experiencing homelessness were born and raised in Marquette County and are our fellow citizens. Please think of them as you move forward with this ordinance. Thank you for your time and all that you do to serve our community.
My name is Ryan Redman. I live at 540 Center Street here in Marquette. I've worked with the homeless in our community for over five years. I've helped the city and the police force clean up numerous homeless encampment sites. Just looking at this as a whole, everyone has made super valid points, but the cruelty and the lack of compassion is something that needs to be taken note of. To take someone's belongings in this process of homelessness is not a quick one, as we can see in our city. To take their belongings and their work and their paperwork and dispose of it is simply cruel. And not only cruel, but counterproductive, because these people that have spoke from the organizations take a long time and hard work to get all their IDs and paperwork and birth certificates together, and they keep it on their persons or at their camp. And to pass this ordinance would be not only counterproductive, but cruel. So please reconsider. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Lindsay Gerard. I reside at 723 Park Street in Ishpeming. I'm just going to share a little bit of my experience. So as a child, you know, I didn't have much of a choice, but I was homeless for a little bit then. I was as an older teenager, like seventeen years old, and then I was as a young adult. So I was countless times, I lost things, you know, countless times, and I've had to start over countless times. However, some of the nicest people that I'm surrounded by work at Room at the Inn or is housed there. A lot of people I work with are also homeless, and I wish there was more help out there. I know what helped me was relatability, you know, with people just helping each other. Sometimes all I needed was stability of any kind and a smile, and that's what Room at the Inn gives. Once I found help and resources, it was like a breath of fresh air, you know. Life has been relatively well since then. Thank you to the resources. And I urge you to reconsider the ordinance of 2502 and give help to those in the community. We need more compassion and less criminalization, so thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Alex Skindon. I reside at 41 Elder Drive. This is actually my second time standing in front of this council asking that ordinances such as 2502 are prevented from ever being passed in my community. The first time was back in July shortly after the passage of Grants Pass v. Johnson, and I was told by the council at that time that we had no interest whatsoever in passing legislation such as 2502, yet here we are. And the vague nature of this ordinance leaves so much room for interpretation and for dangerous situations for people in this community that we need to care about. Banning all persons from occupying city-owned and city-controlled property overnight will have extremely harmful effects on people who are experiencing homelessness in this community. And this is not theoretical. This is already happening with legislation that is worded very similarly in communities across our country ever since Grants Pass. If local facilities are at capacity and can't accommodate members of our community in need of support, their only option is usually to sleep in city-owned or city-controlled properties. In order to protect the most vulnerable in our community, this ordinance should be further reviewed so that it does not cause hardship to people who are already in need of our support. I urge the board to table this ordinance so that it can be reviewed and developed before being brought to a vote. I urge the board to continue to work with local organizations, such as the Room at the Inn, in order to achieve these goals. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Hello. My name is Patrick Markie. I live at 419 West College Avenue. And I am here to actually talk about what's under new business for the City Commission regarding the planned unit development vote that you have for the magnetic property. Those of us who live in that neighborhood received an invitation from Verdia Group for a meeting tonight at St. Michael's Church at the same time that this meeting was planned. Those of us in the neighborhood are not opposed to the development. We need the housing. That's very obvious. We are opposed to the fact that we weren't given a chance, or maybe we're given a chance, but we're also given a better option to receive refreshments and cheese at St. Michael's instead of coming here to vote our concern about you approving what the city zoning commission already approved. And I raised some objections with what that actually happened that evening. They said they needed to meet multiple requirements. Several of the zoning commissioners said, and you can check their minutes, "Oh, I guess I met that requirement. I approve." You guess you met that requirement? It's either they did or they didn't, and it should have been a no vote. And if those in that neighborhood had a chance to voice their opinion tonight, that's probably what many of them would have said. Again, we're not opposed to the development. We might be opposed to the looks or the size of it. And of course, tonight, we've been receiving messages that, you know, they've already changed what they originally presented that night. Less units, different access, different sizes, who knows? So what I'm asking on behalf of that neighborhood is that you postpone that vote for them tonight so that they can all come and share their opinion. It may not be the same as mine, and they have a right to speak their opinion on that without being sidelined with some other activity. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Jay Dickinson, 421 West College Avenue. I support everything my neighbor Patrick said. And I agree that we do need, the housing is going to happen with part of this development. It's too big an area to be, have no residential component to it. I would urge the city to take the blocks that are zoned residential for single-family homes. I would urge that you consider having Verdia or whomever maintain those as single-family homes to try and maintain the neighborhood feel that the central neighborhood currently has. I grew up here. My kids go to Sandy and all. They've been walking all across that parking lot where this development is currently proposed on their way home from school. A nice-looking, single-family home neighborhood, I think, would be a huge benefit in that area. I also represent Marquette Little League, which I thought was going to be on the agenda tonight, but wasn't, so we spoke about this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robert Edgcombe. I live at 1812 Long Year. We're not at the hook yet. I'm here to talk about 2502. So essentially, from my understanding of this, this proposed legislation is exceptionally cruel on a lot of levels. It is, in fact, criminalizing poverty. But I do want to talk about the fact that it also does not provide any benefit to this community. For some background, I'm not completely and totally unaware of what goes on in this community and the way we have to interact with people. I was an armed security guard at federal buildings, working under private contract. I worked at the Social Security Office, the IRS, and the federal courthouse here on Washington III. I have had to deal with plenty of people, and a vast majority of people who come through are oftentimes unhoused. The thing is, no one chooses to be unhoused. No one wakes up every day and says, "I'm going to go burn down my house, and I'm going to decide to pitch a tent in, you know, the square." That's not happening, right? They're there for terrible circumstances, bad things have happened to them, and criminalizing that and punishing them for that is completely and totally worthless to this community. Realistically, I've seen that happen before here in a much more minor but microcosmic scale. The corner of Washington and III had a park bench that sat in the common slot, where at one point, a few unhoused persons ended up setting up camp there. They'd panhandle, they'd shelter through the elements, typically on a Saturday, which is the day that I worked, and I'd see them there oftentimes. And at some point, that bench magically disappeared. I don't know why that bench magically disappeared. There was no purpose for that, but the point is, it harmed our community in the process of trying to punish someone for being impoverished. That is what I see from this today. The idea that we would destroy their property just for existing, as Will spoke about, you're opening up an entire can of worms to legal litigation that's going to jam up the court system in this county for ages, and I mean ages. You're going to harm our community as a whole as well by putting this through. As far as I know, too, we also are experiencing kind of a, what would you call this? A shortage of rooms in our jail as well. There is absolutely no purpose for expanding criminal procedure and adding more people to that problem, right? If it's already a problem, why would we try to put more people in the jail cell? This isn't going to help the community at all. I don't know what the thinking was behind this. I don't know how much thinking was put behind this. I don't know who authored this, but there are some serious glaring issues with this kind of legislation. And realistically, it needs reevaluation at a minimum or a straight-up no, because this is just completely unsatisfactory for myself and for the community. Thanks for your time.
Do we have anyone else for public comment?
My name is Haley Salter. I reside at 371 West Park Street. I am a student at NMU, full-time. I also uphold two social work jobs, as well as an internship within the Public Defender's Office. That is still not enough to afford all the things that I need monthly, including groceries, which are a rising price. I see that, and it is a privilege to receive an education. It is a privilege to wake up in a bed. And I know people skirt around the word "privilege" because no one wants to admit that they were born into something and that they never were just, some people were just handed things, and that's okay. But we need to acknowledge the privilege we have. It is a privilege to go to school and to wake up in a bed and to not be unhoused because, at the end of the day, insurance is a thing. And our systems don't always collaborate. So mental health and substance use don't normally collaborate because insurance doesn't equal out. VA doesn't equal out because of insurance. All these things lead back to insurance. We can't help these individuals because we are creating barriers from them, and this is another barrier we are creating. I understand the safety reasons, and I respect it highly of all of you to consider that because I think safety is an incredible aspect. But I believe it would create more unsafety if we were to criminalize homeless individuals because where will they go? Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Vikash. I stay at Cleveland Avenue, Marquette. I just want to bring a couple of issues which has been missed at the moment. I just want to ask, I mean, bring to attention, is it any impact assessment of this kind of ordinance done? What will be the negative impact on homeless people? People who are survivor of domestic violence? Is there any document which can prove and justify this kind of ordinance is effective? Second thing of, I have been working on homeless issue for a couple of years, and I met a veteran who are homeless, dealing with severe mental illness, dementia, schizophrenia. How this ordinance is going to help them? Further pushing them into the criminal justice system, which is not going to increase, which is going to increase burden on police system, more imprisonment on court system. It's additional expenditure on city council, city commission. So you have to put a lot of resources to just, you know, clear some of the issue, which will come up in the next couple of years if you pass this ordinance. I work with students, and I see a lot of students struggling to pay rent. Some of them fear that their landlords are going to kick them out from their house. Where they will go, where they will stay? These are the issues we deal with every other, you know, class. We are worried. Sometimes domestic violence survivors, they are just running away from the, you know, abuser. Where they will stay, where they will go and find shelter. So these are the bigger questions which city commissioners should look at and come up with the kind of solution which will help this community strive forward. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else for public comment?
Hello, my name is Alex Cowles. I live at 516 Fisher Street, and I am a member of the Marquette community. I am concerned about the current wording of ordinance 25-02. I believe the vague nature of this wording leaves too much room for various interpretations of the law and its application. I believe that the banning of persons from occupying city-owned and city-controlled property overnight can have harmful effects on people experiencing homelessness in this community. If local facilities are at capacity and can not accommodate members of our community in need of support, their only option is to often sleep on city-owned or city-controlled properties. In other, in order to protect the most vulnerable of our community, I believe that this ordinance should be further reviewed so that it does not cause undue hardship to people in need of support. I urge the board to table this ordinance so that it may be reviewed and developed further before being brought to a vote. While we, as a community, prioritize safety and potentially regulating tourism, we must also find an appropriate balance that protects and serves those that currently experiencing hardships. To do this, we must, we believe we should write in specific criteria to this ordinance to protect our unhoused population from additional hardships. For example, we could write in exceptional, exception for unhoused individuals currently working with social nonprofit services to find housing. We could apply this ordinance seasonally to regulate the tourism in the summer but allow grace for unhoused individuals that must sleep in a car to escape the elements in the winter. We could evaluate our recognition, a categorization of paraphernalia to prevent the individuals in personal property from being disposed of. I urge the board to continue working with local organizations such as Room at the Inn to develop reasonable parameters before finalizing this legislation. Thank you for your consideration. I hope this ordinance is tabled today.
Hello, my name is Elijah Crusher. I reside at 333 Silver Creek Road in Harvey. I unfortunately cannot speak tonight to the homeless population in Marquette. I have not had much personal interaction with any of them, but what I can speak to is that I have a friend, one of my dearest friends in the world, and I know that she has regularly experienced problems with her parents where they have threatened to kick her out, where they have threatened to force her to live out of her car for periods of time. And the Room at the Inn, as wonderful of a service as it is, that it provides to our community, does not always have the space necessary to house the unhoused population in our community. And what ordinance 2502 would mean is that if my friend got kicked out of their house and couldn't find a place to stay at Room at the Inn or couldn't find a place to stay with any of me or her other friends, is that she would end up... with any of me or her other friends, is that she would end up in jail potentially, or she would end up with all of her belongings seized. And I've, just thinking about that while I've been sitting here tonight, that is cruel and unjust, and I beg you to reconsider and shelve this ordinance until it can be rewritten. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else for public comment tonight? Anyone else?
Michelle Thomas, 203 East Arch in Marquette, and I'm here for questions or comments on Agenda Item 7.
Anyone else for public comment? Last call for this first public comment? Okay, seeing none, public comment is now closed. I want to remind everyone that spoke that our time to actually address your comments are either during Commissioner comments at the end of the meeting, or during a discussion of said, of a motion on something. So, we're not ignoring anything that you said. The next item we have is consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Davis?
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
And a second? Pro Tem Schlegel?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to our first new business, item of the evening, Ordinance 2502, Overnight Occupation of Public Property, which will be a roll call vote. City Clerk, can you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff is recommending the City Commission adopt the attached ordinance in order to establish clear limitations on the overnight occupation of public property in the city of Marquette. Per city charter, an ordinance cannot be adopted at the meeting at which it is introduced. This ordinance was introduced at the March 31 City Commission meeting. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, adopt Ordinance 2502, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioner, do I have a motion? Commissioner Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. Seeing so many discussion, can't take place until there is a question called to the table. I move to approve ordinance, I lost, 2502, as presented.
Do we have a second? Pro Tem Schlegel?
I will second the motion.
Commissioner Mayor, discussion?
Thank you. So I'm gonna start off here looking over at staff. Could you please provide what the intent and objective of this ordinance is?
Sure. So, originally, this ordinance is, was presented in order to address some of the issues that we've had, having to deal with some of the tourism we've had, an increase in influx of the camping due to more popular campground sites in our city and around the area, and then also some of the issues that we've had with people illegally camping. I say illegally camping without a permit, without a proper place, and disposing of waste in a way that they are not supposed to, and that had to do with tourism. And that was in places like Tourist Park Drive, around there, Presque Isle, in some of our parking lots, in our streets, and it has been, become an issue. There's also that secondary issue as well, that we've been increasingly aware of and dealing with over the years, and that has to do with encampments that are in areas that are perhaps not necessarily seen along the bike path, but are on the bike path as well, or along, you know, wooded areas, the beach, Presque Isle, things like that. And we have been able to kind of look at those calls for service, document them, identify their procedures, and we actually, I do want to commend city staff, especially the Police Department and Room at the Inn, for working together on how to address that when we do come across some of those situations. I think last year, even the year before that, we had some other issues with perhaps clients or individuals that were not necessarily registered or associated with Room at the Inn, and we were able to work with other supporting agencies to help clean up some of those efforts. So, these are things that the Police Department has been trying to address and work together for cooperation versus enforcement, and that's been our policy and our procedure, and would continue to be our policy and procedure when we do come across some of those situations. Does that help answer your question?
A little bit, yeah. So, I mean, the primary objective here really is focused on the tourism aspect, not the homeless aspect. But, you know, obviously, I'm assuming most of the commissioner received some emails and calls regarding this, you know, actually reading the ordinance, I have to honestly agree with some of the comment that it is very vague and could easily be taken out of context. And, you know, really, there's two ways I look at fixing this. Either the intent of the ordinance needs to be more clear, or we need to have the policies and procedures on how exactly it's gonna be enforced attached to the ordinance. However, if the chief needs to make any adjustments for his department, he would at that point, I imagine, have to come back as if it was amending the ordinance if it was attached. So I feel like the easiest option, or maybe the best option, so we're not micromanaging the Police Department, is making the intent of this ordinance more clear, is where my head's at. I have more to say on this, but I'm going to, go ahead. Nope, you're good.
I was gonna, I guess, add a little bit to the policy and procedures-wise from the department's standpoint. That does allow for some flexibility, and while that is a little bit unnerving, I think, in one regard of allowing more enforcement, that does allow for some flexibility for extreme circumstances where perhaps there is a very extreme weather event that we need to be a little bit more flexible with. Having a policy or procedure that's not necessarily tied directly in the ordinance, as one example, I think that had been given with Missoula, Montana, that is written into the ordinance. In order to change that, even for an extreme weather incident, would have to come back before the commission. So looking at that route of a policy internally through the department while keeping the City Commission up to date would be a preferred route for that. Just referencing, there is a policy for the department in the ordinance versus writing the actual policy in the ordinance, if that makes, if I'm making any sense on that. But there are ways, and having that flexibility could actually be more of a benefit versus use for enforcement.
Just for all the members of the public that came to speak on this, you know, I really appreciate all of you coming here and speaking. It's absolutely fantastic to see this many young people in a City Commission meeting. I can see that in the youngest here. But, you know, this is, this is one of these things where a lot of the times, too, it is not, homeless have a lot of people picture it. I mean, there's a lot of people that I think fly under the radar when it comes to homelessness that are jumping from, you know, friend's couch to friend's couch, or hanging out in their car, and it doesn't get as noticed as much because they're not on a sidewalk or in, you know, a public bench. You know, Chief, just wanted you to be aware of this, you know, I grew up being very fearful of the police. I frankly still kind of am, with the exception of I have never once been fearful with the City of Marquette's police force, and I'm very proud of that fact. And I think the City of Marquette's Police Department has a really, really great reputation in a lot of different ways. And aside from my concerns on how this could be affecting, or could be interpreted, I also am fearful, as we've seen here, the effects that this current language would have on your department. I'm just gonna do it. Fine. I'll yield the floor, so the rest of the commission can go for it.
Thank you. As a second to the motion, I get to go through the bazillion things that are going through my head right now. Thank you, first and foremost, for showing up and speaking. I think it's really important to understand how policy is made within the city, and this is something that we can, we get slapped a lot, you know, we get slapped around, people get up in front of us and they really give us the business, and they, they think that we sit outside of this meeting and talk about things, and we, we come up with an idea as a unit and bring it to the, to the community, and that's not what happens. Policy is made through staff, and staff makes the recommendation to the commission. The commission cannot meet as a group, it's illegal, Open Meetings Act, so we cannot, we can't gather each other's thoughts on this. So, since the 31st, and being aware of what's going on, our minds have been put into this mixer of, you know, what are we talking about? Are we talking about camping? Are we talking about homeless people? I've worked with Room at the Inn, I've moved mattresses for several years, back when we were moving from church to church. I have worked with superior connections to help a young man who's homeless get an ID, identification card, and eventually, you know, be able to get the, get out of underneath the darkness of a very bad home life. And I've housed that person for several months as well, after my daughter was housing him in her car for a winter last year. I've seen, I've seen that portion of it, I've been on the homeless task force before COVID. That was headed in the right direction with a number of different agencies and people in the community that were trying to piece together really what it means to have this part of our, our public and our neighbors having to deal with it. And it was a big eye-opener for me, because I learned that, you know, the very small percentage of what goes on that is wrong with some of the actions that people make that are homeless, is it's a fraction of all the people that are out there working to bust their butts to get above water and to put their lives on track. So, I would hope that maybe this is cause and effect where we can sit there and say, maybe we need to get this, COVID shut that down, you know, now went to Zooms, and that was something that we just couldn't wrap our head around up until maybe now is the time to really revisit that and open that back up for discussion and get those people outside of just Marquette involved, because you're here and we're in a very small piece of property here, and this is not a Marquette thing, it's a Marquette County thing, it's a regional thing, it's a, it's a, look around the world, it's happening everywhere, especially, you know, the US is seeing a huge influx. We all know that, and you guys have done a nice job of kind of revisiting and reeducating us from the perspective that a lot of us aren't maybe able to see. So thank you for that. To circle back, though, I really feel that I don't want you guys to think that we're sitting here and we're just making, willing to take this motion from a couple of weeks ago, or this ordinance from a couple of weeks ago, and make a determination that is not 1,000%, that's gonna impact this many people, 1,000% thought. So I think that by the time we're done here tonight, I hope that you are pleased with the way that the commission does their business and how we respect every aspect of our community, from the millionaires to the, to the people that are, you know, struggling to find that next meal. We're all one in this community, and we all need to be respectful and walk in each other's shoes more times than we need to admit. So, with that, I'll pass it on to the next person, but I know, I know where, I know where I'm headed with this, as far as a recommendation goes. Thank you.
Commissioner Otway?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for being here tonight. It's extremely important to voice every concern you have, regardless of whether you think it's a popular, unpopular opinion, doesn't matter. Always be here and, you know, speak out for your community. As I read through this ordinance and really, you know, tried to understand the intent of it and really understand what the language is, I always go back to what the actual language is. And while I do appreciate intent, and I always appreciate intent, I always have concern about the future and how intent can be changed from year to year to year to year. The field I work in, I look at policy and law every single day. I can tell you, the people that I report to look at things differently than the people that looked at it before them. So, I do have concerns with how this ordinance is written, especially some of the subsets in it, subset D, you know, taking personal property. I do fear that there is potential, you know, issues that would be brought upon court for that. You know, ultimately, I don't support this ordinance. I think, you know, I don't support the, the way that it is currently written. I understand the intent of it, and I do believe we need to find a solution that gets to that intent. This is not it, though. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Well, like everyone else, I really appreciate that there's this many of you that showed up to express your opinion. When I first read this ordinance, I had concerns, I had the same concerns that a lot of you expressed, and as I listened to our administrative staff, I understand, I understood the intent and what, what procedures they were going to be doing. And we need to have safety in our community for not only the unhomed, but for the rest of the residents. I have a lot of confidence in our current administration and our police force for their culture and their procedures. My concern is that the way this ordinance is written, when those people over there are not here anymore, maybe 10 years, 15 years down the road, what this ordinance, how this ordinance could be interpreted. So, I too am not happy with the language of this. I feel that we could be working with, I think a lot of you had some suggestions, and I think that there's more that could be done to find a balance with, for safety for everyone, and to do this with more caution and compassion, as I think it was Kim that said those words, and thank you for those words, Kim. So, I am a no vote on this particular ordinance as it is written.
Commissioner Gottlieb, would you like to speak?
I really don't have much to add. I won't.
Commissioner Larson?
Sure. So, I certainly want to thank everybody for sharing their concerns, and so whether or not, whether we're talking about tourists camping where they shown into, or how this ordinance might affect folks that are in crisis, both those perspectives matter, and they're not mutually exclusive in doing so. So I certainly understand the city's intent to prevent unauthorized overnight stays on public property, especially in sensitive areas that might include the bike path or downtown commons where families may want to feel safe and comfortable, that's important, but it's also concerning about, you know, I'm concerned for those people who are in our community that aren't camping for recreation, they're sleeping outside because they don't have any other option. So the way this ordinance is currently written doesn't exactly differentiate between those particular situations, and it certainly could lead to unintended consequences, whether that means it's gonna criminalize survival for people who are already struggling. And realistically, it's probably impossible to distinguish between a tourist in a van and a local who may be sleeping in their vehicle for safety reasons. So maybe we can consider some targeted thoughts, you know, along these lines. First, you know, how can we include policy, you know, requiring outreach and support services to be offered before enforcement action? Is it possible for us to identify public spaces where camping is, you know, can we identify where it's clearly not appropriate, some of those areas that may be targeted along, you know, bike paths or corridors? But is it also, you know, is there any possibility working with partners in the community to identify any temporary or safer alternatives that might include just overnight parking zones that may provide some service to those folks? I don't know if that is possible. We have to reach out to community members, we have to figure out what we can do as a city, you know, to be, to do so. But however we get towards this, I certainly want to make sure that we're drawing clear and fair lines that aren't just punishing folks for being poor. I certainly want Marquette to be a city that takes care of its public places and its people. So I believe we can do both if we're thoughtful and intentional about this, and I've seen both sides of it. I've had people, you know, come to me wanting us to delay this vote, but on the, we also have folks that have come and said, you know what, we want, they have zero tolerance for this, you know, and whether it's the tourists in vans or somebody in crisis, I certainly understand the impulse that people have for wanting to ban it. We all want that safe, clean, and accessible public spaces, but that should be open for everybody. So I don't know that this blanket policy reflects, you know, who we are, there's certainly some nuances in it, and, you know, it's not just about the enforcement, it's about what happens after we tell somebody to move on. So I guess, in short, I've been going on for a long time. I hope we can find balance some way in this, help to protect families in public space, and yes, policies that also happen to recognize the humanity of someone who's sleeping outside because they've run out of options. So, how we get there, I'm not entirely sure, but I think we've heard a lot from the community more pro, how do we work, how do we make something happen that is positive? So, but there's a balance here, there's a balance between public spaces, you know, for recreational use, public spaces for, you know, survival use. I don't know how we get there, but I think the community, I think we have people on the commission who want that to happen, and our administration, who wants to see, you know, peaceful, peaceful folks in the community and not do any more harm. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take a quick moment. I have spent a lot of time since this ordinance was first presented to me at Agenda Review, and my immediate thought was, we have to call Chelsea, this is going to be a problem. I don't know with certainty what everyone on the commission felt, but I can sense from what I've heard now that they all felt the same way. I know and understand that the intent of this ordinance was not to, or was to prevent people from trashing and misusing public areas spaces, and I know that our police department has had a great policy in the last year of returning items from campsites that they had taken down to Room at the Inn. But I also know that I do not feel comfortable leaving an ordinance out there that gives so much leeway and can be taken in so many different ways. Not only does it open us up to legal press, or legal action, but it also opens us up to being people that I would not want to be part of a city that is, let alone run that city. I would feel much more comfortable if we could go back to the ordinance and change it to make sure that we had carve-outs for the right things or the proper language. I do not feel that this ordinance is ready to go forward and be voted on. I think that we need work not only within the city staff, but also with our community resources to ensure that we are doing everything that we can for our most vulnerable population. With that, Cody, did you have some, or sorry, Commissioner Mayor, did you have something you'd like to say?
I do, Madam Mayor. For those of you curious why I keep looking at the merits, because prior to this meeting, I already gave her heads up, I've already drafted a motion that I really wanted to make, which city clerk I emailed to you about 10 minutes ago, so you didn't, so that you didn't have to try to type while I was reading it out loud. But, Your Honor, I move.
Should we?
No, you got to make an amendment. Nope.
I do not. I do not. The motion I'm going to make involves the questions currently on the floor, we do not have to do anything with the current question for me to make the motion. I move to postpone consideration of ordinance 25-02 to the May 12th meeting of the Marquette City Commission and direct city staff to revise the language of the proposed ordinance to more clearly define the ordinance's intent.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the postponement? Commissioner Gottlieb?
Why May 12?
It's a month.
30 days.
Can I ask, can we postpone another two weeks beyond that? Because I would like to be there for that meeting, and I know I will be absent from May 12.
Do you have comments?
Give me us more time.
And it would give the city more time.
I was going to ask if that's enough time, if the city thinks that's enough time.
Cody, would you like to amend your postponement?
Sure.
So, what is the date, then?
We're talking June 9? Are we going back to May?
No, it would be, it would be May 27.
May 26.
27.
Do I need to read all that again, or are we just good with me saying May 27?
Suzanne?
I can if you want me to.
I'm fine with that, as long as you get a second for it.
Will you second that?
I'll second that one as well.
Okay. Commissioner Otte.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Mayor, also, thank you for clarifying and providing that. I do fear that by extending this to a point of any date without actually guiding city staff in a direction we want them to go with it, we may not get to the result that we're all looking for. And I believe that there are certain things about this ordinance that bother, you know, each of us differently. For instance, obviously, there's no question that we don't want to, you know, have an ordinance that takes advantage of disadvantaged people, that we don't want that to happen. But additionally, I do have huge legal concerns when it comes to this ordinance, and when it comes to the idea of seizing people's property and putting that on paper. So, I think if we're going to extend this, my input on it, as opposed to tabling it, is to just vote no. And the reason I say that is, I think the entire thing needs to be rewritten, but that's my point on it, unless we are giving actual guidance on which way to send this, because something might come back that we don't like and we need to amend again. So, that's just my thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners down here first, before, yeah?
I guess I'd like to hear, if we are to approve the extension, I would like to hear from the city manager how you would maybe follow through with this and work with the people in the community and the police, and come up with the various language. I mean, how would that, how would that process work?
For the extension, correct?
Yes, for the extension. So, what would happen during that extension?
So, what I have already been anticipating, and we had already been discussing internally as well, is working with Room at the Inn to identify some of the major concerns within this ordinance that has also been vocalized by the city commission here tonight, and then finding ways to document those policies and procedures. I think you believe you said already clarifying that intent as well, and then really trying to define what the biggest concern for safety is for everyone, including all of our community members and those that it may be visiting as well. So, when we talk about that, seizing property is not necessarily the terms we would be using, talking about abandoned property, health and sanitary hazardous, defining that more clearly, and working with our community partners, especially Chelsea at Room at the Inn. And our police department, who has a dedicated officer to, I think, sit on some of those conversations as well, has been a great community partner.
So, you would be committed to finding mutual grounds in the redevelopment of the ordinance? I guess I feel, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Otte, but I also feel that if it comes before us again and we're not happy with it, then we can still be a no, or go send it back.
And I do want to clarify that the mechanisms right now that we have are far, I think, far more damaging for how we are, I would say, enforcing some of the current laws that are in place. This would be allowing it to be, I would say, as much as it doesn't feel this way in the actual language, municipal civil infraction versus a trespassing, which is a misdemeanor. And some of the instances that we are looking to address are those unsanitary, unsafe areas, and not necessarily belongings that have been set aside for storage there and maybe need to be returned to their owner. And so, identifying that policy and that mechanism and that way to do that safely and humanely and compassionately is how we would expect to work with Room at the Inn. And there's already been some ideas out there that Chelsea's tossed around.
Good drive.
So, clarification, would there be rewriting of the ordinance, or would this just be additional policies and procedures to go along with it? And if there is rewriting of the ordinance, would we have to have a first and second reading again?
No, it would just be an amendment to the current writing, so if there were changes to the ordinance as it is, and not a major overhaul, starting over, that would not require two readings, that would be one with those modifications. I think that there are certain parts of this that are outlined that are quite acceptable, and then there are some really specific items in there that need to be then amended. And that's what we'd be proposing to the city commission.
In my experience with other governing boards, policies are not generally presented to the entire board, but are rather within the department. Would we get a chance to see any additional policies or procedures prior to approval of the ordinance?
What I am hearing here is there would be a desire to have some sort of updates, whether it's a presentation or additional information that is presented publicly. We can do that if that is the commission, which I am feeling that general consensus would like.
Thank you.
Commissioner Larson, did you?
I guess I would just say, you know, thinking about Commissioner Otte's suggestion, you know, with guidance and trying to figure out what that is, you know, I'm hoping just from my point of view that, you know, there's some sort of clear guidance, and whether that is policy or within the ordinance, you know, and, you know, how you go about distinguishing a visitor to the area versus homeless to the area, you know, is that a policy question? Is that an ordinance question? How, and then also making certain that we have, you know, a plan for protecting personal belongings, you know, during potential, you know, enforcement, if that is, how is notice given, how are they going to retrieve those, you know, where does that go? So, I think there's a lot of those nuanced pieces that you would need to come into it, but certainly would be happy to, you know, share additional comments, you know, afterwards.
Do you mind if I go, just, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I think a lot needs to be said, too, about just staff and kind of what has went into this ordinance, because we all sit here and we are, you know, addressing, obviously, the thing that's coming to the top of our heads and our hearts, and that's the disadvantaged people in this area. But we are bringing up, and city staff here is bringing up, something that is a legitimate concern and problem to the area. I can tell you, as just a resident myself, not just a commissioner, but a resident, I spend a lot of time in our park system, I spend a lot of time walking around Prescott, I spend a lot of time seeing people that are in there illegally that are not from this area, not just camping, but they've somehow manipulated their way into Prescott Park, and they're sleeping in their van illegally camping, essentially. So, there clearly is an issue here that needs to be addressed, and I think that that's what we want to get to. And I just want, you know, to make sure we recognize that city staff is not trying to do anything, you know, to take advantage of disadvantaged people, and that was never their intent, from my understanding. And hopefully, you know, our comments here don't reflect poorly on you or the work that you're trying to do, and I just wanted to make sure we clarified that, because we know your intent is not to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Otte's point of giving guidance to what we'd actually like to see changed is a really good idea. I know a couple things that I would like to see in here, I know, I've seen the Missoula, you brought that actually to me, and theirs. I would like to explore the options that are in there, I think theirs is a very well-done ordinance, and I'd like to find a way that if we could include things like their tag system for having people allowed in certain places, I would like that. I know that it would take a lot of work to find places, because we would need to be required to have bathrooms and trash services, which is more of a put on the community, but I'd like to at least look into that. I would like to look into the legality of it, there were a lot of points brought up today about whether or not the way this is written could even stand a court, and I really don't want to spend a lot of city money fighting a battle on something just to hurt things. I would like to address how we handle property that is seized and make sure that there is an actual standard of how long do they have, once their campsite has been identified, do they get a certain amount of time to take it down, where their property goes after it is taken down, and how that they can retrieve it. I would like to make sure that that is actually in there somewhere. And, I mean, I feel like maybe it's just me that read it this way, but the way I read it is, it's for anyone to sleep, if they're not in a vehicle, technically, I believe someone could just sleep if they didn't have anything with them, and could just sleep on the ground on city property. So, I feel like we really are making it clear that we are going for someone with anything at all. So, I want to make sure that we have everything in there in a correct way, and maybe putting out there that there are zones that will be more enforced, more, not to say that we would encourage it in any other place, but places that are high traffic and things like that would be seen first and obviously addressed first, such as the bike path or the corridor, or our main parks, things that could cause an issue. I know that the police force has had a lot of trouble with certain encampments that are located right along the bike path, and we've had a lot of problems with individuals causing harm or damage to people that are walking and doing things. And so, I do want to ensure that we can give the police force the support that they need to handle situations as they arise that definitely need to be handled, but I also want to make sure that we are not leaning hard on the people who are just trying to get by. So, for me, that is what I would like to see addressed in some way. I don't know if any of the commission has anything else specifically they would like to see addressed, that they would like to tell city staff for, ooh, good lighting. But those are the main points that I see, or that I feel like I've heard tonight as well. Does anyone else have anything else they would like to add before we bring this to a vote on the postponement?
I hope you may win.
Perfect. All right. With that, all in favor of the, oh, wait, sorry, it's a roll call vote still, isn't it? I mean, it says.
I can do whatever you want.
City clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, first, could we know, are we voting on the amendment, or are we voting on, do we vote on the amendment first, and then?
There was no amendment.
There was no amendment to the postponement.
That was, you just changed your motion.
You just changed the, he just said that different number.
Could we have the motion read?
Sure. It was emailed to me.
[laughter]
So, Commissioner Mayor moves to postpone consideration of the ordinance 2502 to the May 27th meeting of the Marquette City Commission and direct city staff to revise the language of the proposed ordinance to more clearly define the ordinance intent.
I'll vote yes.
Okay. City clerk, can we have that roll call vote, please? Sorry?
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Otte?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schlegel?
Yes.
And Mayor Hanley.
Yes. The motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to our next, I mean, our next new business item, Commissioner Larson's travel reimbursement. City clerk, can we please have the background?
Commissioner Larson attended the annual Michigan Municipal League Capitol Conference, held in Lansing, March 18th to 19th, 2025. The following check will be issued for travel expenses incurred. Commissioner Michael Larson, check number 1011944 for $139. Fiscal effect, travel cost is $139. Adequate funds are available within the fiscal year 2025 city commission travel budget. Recommendation, approved travel reimbursement for Commissioner Larson in the amount of $139 for the Michigan Municipal League Capitol Conference, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Protem Schlegel?
I'll make a motion to approve Commissioner Larson's travel reimbursement as stated.
A second? Commissioner Otte?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll have him to check.
Commissioner Davis?
Just for those who are here, I think it's really important that we, as commissioners, have representation on educational programs that the Michigan Municipal League sponsors, and I'm very grateful that we had two people at that particular conference.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes six to zero. The next item of new business is Mayor Hanley's travel reimbursement. City clerk, can you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Hanley attended the annual Michigan Municipal League Capitol Conference, held in Lansing, March 18th through 19th, 2025. The following check will be issued for travel expenses incurred. Mayor Hanley, check number 1011934 for $739.79. Fiscal effect, total travel cost is $739.79. Adequate funds are available within the fiscal year 2025 city commission travel budget. Recommendation, approved travel reimbursement for Mayor Hanley in the amount of $739.79 for the Michigan Municipal League Capitol Conference, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Do we have a motion? Commissioner Gottlieb?
I approve travel reimbursement for Mayor Hanley in the amount of $739.79 for the Michigan Municipal League Capitol Conference.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Otte?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just echoing Commissioner Davis earlier, since it's kind of loud in here, MML, you know, conferences and things like that for, you know, ultimately, there are a chance really for the little bit of additional learning to do this job that we can get. Ultimately, you know, the mayor is making head noises.
I was just going to go stop him outside.
Ultimately, the, ultimately, the mayor and Commissioner Larson got to do something that many of us have gotten the chance to do over the years, and it was attend a conference where they can really learn on things, and there are so many things to learn from, such as, one, just how to run a public meeting, to, you know, what to do in an active shooter situation. There are things like that that we take from these conferences and apply to doing this job and try to make our community that much better. So, I just want to understand, or make you guys understand, the why behind why the commissioners oftentimes, and a couple times a year, will actually go do these things. So, thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed?
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Up, up next, we have the Peg Hervenin Bandshell Construction Contractor Award. City Clerk, can you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. At the October 30th, 2023 meeting, the city commission accepted a generous donation from the Hervenin Foundation toward construction of a new bandshell, and approved a request to name the facility the Peg Hervenin Bandshell. At the March 25th, 2024 meeting, the city commission awarded the bid for design and construction oversight to AWH Architects of Minneapolis, Minnesota. Staff advertised the project for construction bids on February 11th, 2025, and received two qualified bids. Myron Construction, Inc. with $2,84,175, and a bid from Clausner Construction and Sales, Inc., with a bid of $2,101,500. Community services and engineering staff reviewed the bids with AWH Architects and found both to be substantially complete. Staff is recommending the commission award the construction contract to the lowest bidder, Myron Construction Co., Inc. Myron is based out of Nino, Wisconsin, and would run this project out of their Marquette office. The Marquette City Band has committed to raising all matching funds, as per the attached letter. The total budget for this project, with the award of this contract, is $2,205,235, and to date, over $1,500,000 has been raised toward the project. If approved, construction would begin immediately and be substantially complete prior to winter, with allowances for landscape plantings and site reclamation through June 15th, 2026. Fiscal effect, Market City Band has committed to raising all additional funds, resulting in no general fund contribution by the city. Recommendation, award the bid and approve the contract with Myron Construction Co., Inc., in the amount of $2,84,175, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioner Davis?
I move that we award the bid and approve the contract with Myron Construction Company, Incorporated, in the amount of $2,84,175, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract.
Commissioner Larson?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yes, I am, this is a project that has moved faster than most of our projects, and I'm really glad to see it. We have some very generous donations that are bringing this quickly coming to fruition. I'm glad that they're going to be able to start it soon, and I am confident that the city band is going to be able to raise the entire amount to, so that none of this comes from the city coffers, and congratulate the city band in what they have accomplished thus far.
Commissioner Larson?
I just like that this is a great example of a public-private kind of partnership that's moving forward, and, you know, the community will certainly benefit from a new bandshell out to the island.
Mr. Gottlieb?
Well, I'm thrilled to see this move forward, and I do love the design. I, somebody's got to ask, what happens if this Marquette City Band does not raise the additional funds? Where does that money come from? How do we, will we have to have a budget adjustment?
So there actually is included in the information, there is a committed, a letter from the city band that has committed to raising all additional funds, and making sure that they are continuing to raise those. We've had a similar, I think, similar situation, and we've had a similar commitment as well from other organizations for projects.
I saw the letter, and I appreciate the letter. What happens if they don't?
Then I, that, that is a good question, that we would probably be looking at the legality of that, but at this point, there is the committed dollars here, and we would expect that to happen before construction is complete and before anything is finalized. Suzanne, I'm kind of looking at you on that one, if we've had any instances like this, or ultimately, we would be on the hook if that's, if that were the case.
We, we would ultimately be on the hook if that was the case. Excuse me, because we are signing the contract with the contractor to construct it. Obviously, I would rely on community services to be applying the pressure on them to hold up their commitment if that happened, and that would be on community services to find the funding in their budget. But they've raised a substantial portion in a very short period of time before we've even started construction.
I think it's in their best interest as well to, to raise those funds for the, the project, too.
Any other questions, Commissioner Gottlieb?
I, I've chaired capital campaigns, nothing this large, and I know that I personally made up some difference on those capital campaigns, and I really hope this comes true. I'm going to vote yes, but I really don't want the city to be responsible for it.
Any comments down here? Protem Schlegel?
Yeah, I know we've got a couple representatives from the Marquette City Band here. I don't know if they want to weigh in on either that question, or maybe moreover, just the general design, if they're, you know, I'm sure that they're excited because they've approved it. It's always nice to offer up the opportunity for, for them to, dare I say, toot their own horn. Hello? This time? No? Okay, all right.
I am Mike Stucko. I live at 332 East Ridge. I own a couple of businesses here in Marquette, Stucko's Pub and Grill, Breakers Roadhouse. I own a couple of Airbnbs in Marquette. I am also the president of the Marquette City Band, and I represent a lot of people. There's not just the Marquette City Band that's involved, but also the people that have donated money so far are also heavily involved. This is not just going to be a bandshell for the Marquette City Band. This is going to be a crown jewel in this great vibrant town that we get to all live in. I know that Marquette is going to build this bandshell for us. I know. It's not going to be the city that builds that bandshell for us. That's me, and that's my personal opinion. But this is what I believe, and that's why I took this position, and that's why I also took this position, to help raise this money for it. Because I know I'm not going to put that pressure on the city. This is my belief, and that's, this is the way that I am moving every single day. I'm going to relieve, give up my position to, is Steve with me?
Mm-hmm.
Hi, Steve. I'm going to let Steve Grugan talk about this as well. Thank you for your time.
So I'm Steve Grugan. I'm the director of the Marquette City Band, and I live at 129 Ridgewood Drive in Harvey, Trocolai Township. And I brought plenty of donation brochures with me tonight. Everybody in the audience and the commission is asked to take one. We are, I guess, the total amount that we're looking at that's been donated and pledged is, is about three-quarters of what we need, and we only started this campaign in, I think it was October. So we're, we're to the point of asking for some major donations from some foundations and businesses that we've already applied for, and it just, that process takes a time to, to come around for them to meet about it and to award the money. So we're expecting that. And also, there are people in the community that are wanting to donate stock, and sometimes that takes, they want to do that on a two-year process. And so if you, if you saw the 2026 in there, it's not that we're really expecting that it's going to take that long to get those commitments, but it's just, it takes a couple of years. Some people want to give over to, you know, in that, that span of time. As far as the design of the bandshell, I've been so pleased at how this has come about so quickly. Everybody that's seen the, the design just loves it, and it's just going to be, and I know about other community bands in, in the country. I'm actually involved in the Association of Concert Bands, which is the national organization. I write a column in that journal. And I, I think this is going to be a really great facility for, not only for the city band and other musical groups, but other groups that want to use it as well. So thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Anyone else? I thought it brings it to a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. The next new business item we have is the waiver request for the planned unit development proposal on West Magnetic Street. City Clerk, can you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. On March 18th, 2025, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for a request to consider the concept plan and the criteria for qualifications of a proposed planned unit development for multiple parcels on West Magnetic Street that were formerly used as parking lots by Marquette General Hospital. The Planning Commission found that the proposal met all the required criteria of Land Development Code Section 54.323F, and seven of the criteria of subsection 323F5, of which only three out of 10 were required to be met in order for administrative approval to be granted. Having met the standards for approval of the PUD concept and project qualifications, the Planning Commission was then able to consider a request by the applicant for the waiver of the LDC Section 54.323C1 standard, requiring a PUD to be a minimum of two acres of contiguous land, which the city commission may grant if it finds the circumstances listed in Section 54.323C1 and/or two would be met by the proposal. The applicant provided a written request explaining how they meet these circumstances, and the Planning Commission deliberated on the request before rendering the following motion. It was moved by Kay Clegg and seconded by Jay Fitkin, and carried nine to zero, that after holding a public hearing and review of the concept, PUD site plan dated 2/17/25, and the staff report and analysis with attachments for 01-PUD-03-25, the Planning Commission finds that the proposal is eligible for a PUD, and recommends to the city commission approval of the waiver request per Section 54.323C due to the following findings. There is precedent for non-contiguous PUD parcels, and for the anticipated achievement of consistent results in PUD development. Fiscal effect, if developed for multiple housing units, the city will receive an increase in property tax revenue on the proposed PUD parcels after development occurs. Recommendation, concur with the Planning Commission recommendation and approve the waiver of the minimum PUD size criteria for contiguous land. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commission, do we have a motion? Anyone?
I'd like to motion.
Protem Schlegel?
I don't have the exact revision from me. Thank you.
Can we make it bigger?
Yes. I would make the motion to concur with the Planning Commission recommendation and approve the waiver of the minimum PUD size criteria for contiguous land.
Do we have a second? Mayor, or sorry, Commissioner Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll second the motion.
Any discussion, Protem Schlegel?
This is just a little bit of, to me, I call it housekeeping after being on the Planning Commission, and I would be happy to let city staff kind of put a little bit more light on this, just to understand why it's necessary in that particular area with a couple of parcels that are causing this to come up. So if you want to put a little light on that, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly. And I'll pass it over to, to Community Development Director Dennis Stackwitz in a minute, if I, especially if I'm misspeaking on this one. But essentially, this waiver request is setting that playing field for any type of development on the site, on this site, and it has to do with waiving the required minimum lot size for contiguous parcels. And because of the way that this area or this development to be is, is laid out, are there's various sized parcels, and then it's separated by a different owned parcel, not part of that development. And so in order to do anything really there, there will need to be some sort of adjustment made, and this waiver is just requesting to, to kind of go, I don't say against, but to vary from that minimum lot size requirement. And I will clarify that any design, you know, actual design of this development will be decided during the actual PUD process. This is simply just getting that started. So that, details that have been kind of hashed out or discussed are going to still further be refined. Did I get that correctly?
You did an excellent job.
Yeah, good teacher, yeah.
In, in essence, the commission is setting the table for the planned unit development. If you feel that because of the circumstances, this warrants a waiver for the size requirement, and you approve it, what happens is that, basically, then Veridia goes back and works with the Planning Commission on dimensions and setbacks and heights of buildings, and all those things that you heard from the, the neighbors this evening. They go back and do that through the planned unit development process, and that's a notified process, similar to anything else in a rezoning. They'll all be notified, welcome to the meeting, and then, once that's complete, then that, even as a second check and balance, comes back to the city commission.
Well done. Thank you.
Commissioner Mayor, do you have anything to add?
I think the only additional thing I maybe wanted to mention is just, I'm just going to hope that the kind of community form aspect of this, being scheduled at the same time of this, was just a oversight, and as we continue to move through the larger development of this, hopefully that doesn't happen again. But, thank you, Your Honor.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Lars?
So just to be clear, that this, this is an approval of the development itself, it's just a procedural green light, essentially to have formal review as it move forward. Okay.
Commissioner Howard?
Thank you, Mayor.
Just to confirm for the audience, I already know the answer, but we will get to review the site plan, correct?
That is part of the process for the PUD, yes.
Okay, just confirming. Thank you.
Any other comments, or if that will bring it to a vote? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to our last new business item of the evening, the year-round off-leash dog recreation area. City Clerk, can we have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. The city currently operates an off-leash dog park at Tours Park Campground from November 1st through April 30th. This year, 104 passes have been sold for the park. The city commission adopted the 2025 five-year recreation master plan at the March 31st, 2025 regular meeting. The plan outlined establishing a new dog park that would make the recreation opportunity available year-round. The citizen survey included in the plan had this amenity as the third highest priority after natural areas and hiking and biking trails. Over the winter, a user established a petition at the park to request a year-round dog park, and the petition gained 368 signatures. At this time, the city manager is seeking consensus from the commission authorizing her to direct city staff to reexamine all city-owned property and work with local partners to determine an appropriate location. Fiscal effect, none with this action. Recommendation, direct the city manager to authorize staff time, be dedicated to reexamining all city-owned property, and working with local partners to identify a suitable location for another dog park that makes the recreation opportunity available year-round. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Protem Schlegel, do we have a motion?
You do. I would like to make the motion to direct the city manager to authorize staff time to be dedicated to reexamining the city-owned property and working with local partners to identify a suitable location for another dog park that makes the recreation opportunity available year-round.
Do we have a second, Commissioner Mayor?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion, Protem Schlegel?
I'm very passionate about our puppies. I, I love my dog, and I love the fact that I'm able to get myself out in the wintertime and utilize the, the winter park. It's probably saved my sanity many years, especially during COVID, and allowed me to not put as many pounds on in the winter that I normally would have. Not only that, but it's great exercise for our furry friends, and this is something that's been on the top of our list, wish list for the, the Marquette Master Plan and the recreational Master Plan for many, many years, and I'm talking way back. It's always top three or top five. And I personally have done a lot of looking around for, for a piece of property, and I've had a couple of opportunities to speak with other groups that occupy other spaces that are, that are city-owned, and feel like we've got a couple of options that would make great sense for a summertime option for off-leash opportunity. It, it's going to be quite, I envision this as we move forward. We're going to put together a board of some sort. I don't know how it's going to start. I'm actually quite surprised that we've actually got to this point. I'm, I'm excited. But as things move forward, we will seek out information from the, from the community and make sure that we do things in accordance to the safety and well-being of both man and beasts. So, thank you.
I don't think I have really anything further added. I'm just, you know, again, like Mayor Protem Schlegel said, this is something I think for years I've heard is a really high up there on the priority list for the city, and, you know, Marquette has a reputation of not being a very dog-friendly community, and I think this is a great way to start fixing that. So, very excited about it, and that's really all I got.
Any other comments? Commissioner Ottawa, and then Commissioner-
Yeah, one thing I would really-
Yeah, one thing I would really urge and ask staff to be able to do with this, too, is bring a simple, I don't need you to go into detail with it, bring a simple cost analysis of what maintenance is going to cost for this thing, for the site that you choose, and you can kind of tailor that around the current site that we have even. Ultimately, I think the way that I see this going, and I think that we all kind of see it going, is, you know, some sort of organization or group of people is going to really kind of step up to the plate here, so this isn't costing the city money. So, to be fair, we need to know what the costs are going to be. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to thank Commissioner Schlegel for kind of leading and kind of pushing on this topic, and he's right, this has been at the top of the Parks and Rec Plan for a lot of years, and in fact, I first was campaigning for this office in 2019, and as I went door to door and talked to people, this was probably the number one request was a dog park. I'm pleased that the community of the dog park provided some signatures. If you notice in the background, there were over 300 signatures, but only 100 licenses sold, so there's going to be a lot of people that need to step up and really embrace this park. I think this is going to be like Kids Cove in the band shell where the community steps forward, and those that are passionate about it provide that input. And the dog park, the winter dog park that we have, is more than a dog park, it is a social place, and in fact, when I walk around the dog park, my dog Lucy will really appreciate any of this, but I talk to a lot of people about city issues, so it's actually one of my forums for talking to the community, but I see a lot of socialization and people exercising at our winter dog park, and I hope that's the same that happens with our year-round off-leash, whatever Commissioner Schlegel is calling it, but thank you.
Any more? Is that bringing to a vote? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to our second public comment session of the meeting. Again, public comments cannot exceed three minutes per person. Please give your statement. And physical address when approaching the commission?
Leslie Williams, 124 Blum Huber Avenue, Marquette. I want to address the upcoming change to the garbage pickup. I, my house was built in 1895. I have a single driveway that's slightly wider than my car. My house is on one side, there's a retaining wall in the back, and a retaining wall on the other side. All my snow has to be pushed to the end of the driveway, or I take it out and put it in my front yard, or in the right-of-way on my property or my neighbor's property. I don't have room for a garbage or a recycling cart, so I had to have a recycling cart, and in the winter, I stuff it under my steps in the back, because otherwise it's in the way, and I take my recycling in my car to the waste management place during the winter. And that's okay, it's a luxury to have recycling picked up at my house. I don't feel the same way about garbage. I think it's the city's responsibility to pick up garbage from the residents unless I can have a burn barrel or a outhouse to bury it in. So now I'm going to have to carry my garbage for three or four months to the waste management. I like garbage bags, they work well for me. I pay for what I dispose of, I quietly take my garbage bag out, put it on the street, and in the morning, it's gone. There's no loud noises, I don't wake up my neighbors, it's not hard pulling a cart, this works very well for me. So, I guess my problem is that I feel like when there's things that need to be changed, it's kind of a one-size-fits-all, and one-size-doesn't-fit-all. I know there's plenty of people that love their garbage carts, and I'm going to love mine, too, because I'm going to put everything in there so I never have to go to the dump, because right now I have to fit it in a bag. But I think the garbage containers are unsightly, and they're noisy, and I wish I had the opportunity to keep having my garbage picked up in a bag. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Michelle Thomas, still at 203 East Arch in Marquette. Normally, I wouldn't speak to this, but I do feel it's appropriate. Veridia Group recognizes that whatever we do in the neighborhood at the old hospital will have an impact on that neighborhood, and we had been inundated with requests to share our plans, so we planned a meeting. The invitations for that meeting went out on April 3rd. We were notified on April 8th that we would be on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Any more for public comment?
How's it going? Ian Watson, also still at 513 High Street. I just wanted to say thank you for tabling ordinance 2502. I think that was the right decision to take time to further review it, just because I believe we absolutely can regulate tourism while also doing everything in our power to protect the most vulnerable people. I just wanted to echo some words from Commissioner Davis concerning future interpretations. I think myself and many other people in this room, that is our primary concern. For me, there's absolutely no doubt that the group of people in front of me is reasonable, is open to discussion, is open to hearing concerns and opinions from the community, and I very much appreciate that, but yes, in the future, 10, 15 years down the road, we just want to make sure that this is absolutely concrete and not left open for harmful interpretations. My reason for actually stepping up to this podium is because I heard a lot of how questions, how do we get there, how do we achieve our goals, how do we identify the difference between right and wrong? And to that, I would just say there are a lot of very qualified people in this room that could be a part of that process. If we make the process of rewriting this legislation open to the community, there are social workers that work with people experiencing homelessness, there are social workers that specialize in assisting people who struggle with substance abuse, social workers that work with victims of domestic violence, and people who themselves have experienced homelessness and obviously are the experts of their own experience. So I guess that's just input from a community member. As you look to finalize this legislation, improve it, and make sure it serves the community best, I would suggest making this process as open as you possibly can to the community. Thank you.
Tony Martin Boyle, 401 West Michigan Street. I just want to echo everything Ian said, and I also want to thank you for your votes tonight, thank you for voting with your hearts and in a principled manner. Also want to thank you for supporting Dog Park, thank you for supporting our city band and the band shell. Also, the update to the noxious weeds ordinance, they snuck into the consent agenda, it's good movement there, so you are seen. And that's really all I want to say, you heard us coming in all, you know, passionate, and thank you for, now, thank you, because you represented your constituents, so appreciate that.
Anyone else for public comment?
You knew I would come up, didn't you? Barb Outtie, 1324 North Front. First of all, thank you, Commissioner Davis, for this phone call about this issue that I just want to bring up in front of the commission. And actually, it's probably more of a DDA thing, but I do want to bring it out as a public, as a citizen, and I'm not representing any committee. I know that Third Street, you know, there's a dream of turning Third Street into a bustling business district, and, you know, to attract people into Marquette, you know, drive, park, shop, dine, and spend money. And I know, in theory, it's a great idea on paper, a commercial district in the heart of Marquette, but honestly, I feel like it's trying to fit a square peg in a round hole. Third Street, as we know, is really never built for heavy traffic, you know, it's just an ongoing issue about trying to support the cars without sacrificing, you know, safety and comfort, there's no parking, it's all, that's, it's, yeah, and the surrounding infrastructure really wasn't designed for a high-volume commercial flow. You know, that traffic really belongs out on the bypasses and boulevards, not in the middle of our neighborhoods. But it doesn't mean that Third Street has failed. In fact, I think we're looking at it, you know, I think we should look at it in a different perspective. Strong towns teaches us to look at what places really are and build from there. Third Street is a neighborhood street, it's lined with homes, bordered by families, and used every day by people who just live blocks away. If we stop chasing the traffic outside, you know, trying to figure out where to park people, and instead of design Third Street for people who can walk there, bike it, and who live near it, I think we're really going to unlock Third Street's true potential. You know, imagine a Third Street that's calmer, cleaner, safer, one-way maybe. Imagine wide sidewalks, protected bike lanes, green spaces, safe marked crossings. That's how we turn Third into a truly thriving corridor, not by trying to funnel more cars in and trying to find parking spots for them. When streets feel safe, people come, not just in cars, but on foot and by bike, and when people walk, they stop, they linger, they build relationships, and that what's sustained local businesses. It's not volume, but community. Look at that, 20 seconds, seven seconds, six, five, four, three, two, one.
Thank you.
Patrick Markey, 419 West College. I appreciate the note from the Community Development Director regarding what the vote was really on, but maybe the point wasn't heard. I understand that zoning, we'll have their, planning commission, I'm sorry, will have their chance, to look at again. Invitations can be turned down and asked to be rescheduled for one. It was very nice of them, and I was very excited for that opportunity to speak at that, but unfortunately, I had to choose between the two, so I didn't get that opportunity, like my neighbors didn't get the opportunity. My concern with you guys approving that ordinance, the planned unit development, is that it does allow them to get around possibly some of the zoning and work within the city development instead of the community members who live in that area. So I'm disappointed in the city commission for not postponing that vote. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay Dickinson, 421 West College. I thank you for clarifying on the note, I hope the intent really is there and that we can work together as a community to develop that area. On the dog park, I am a chocolate lab owner as well, and we have utilized Tours Park and enjoy it a lot. I'm also the president of Marquette Little League, and I know at one point some area around Kaufman was discussed as a potential dog park site. We hosted a state tournament and several district tournaments, we have over 450 families in the greater Marquette area registered with Marquette Little League for this year. So I guess I would urge the city commission and staff, as they look at potential areas, and I know land is very limited in Marquette, but to consider interaction with small children and the proximity of families and areas where dogs maybe shouldn't be off-leash and running around uncontained when they go through that process, but I am also excited about it and would be a frequent user as well. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Dave Campana, 1711 Grandview Drive in South Marquette. I was expecting the anti-fluoride people to be here tonight, they're not. They have been showing up at the Nagani and Ishbromene City Commissions. Their purpose is to convince them to take fluoride out of their water. Marquette, Ishbromene, Nagani fluorinate their water, and it's probably one of the best things they can do for their community. The number you got to know is 0.7 parts per million, remember that number? That's what, how much fluoride goes into our city water. 0.7 parts per million of fluoride, it's safe and it's effective. It's effective because it doesn't prevent dental cavities, but it sure reduces them. It's been proven, 100 billion times proven, you cannot argue that point. It's safe, many, many scientific organizations have studied it, there's been 3,000 studies on fluoride, they all say it's safe, does not cause cancer, does not cause thyroid problems, does not cause mental diminished IQ in children. Probably the biggest thing, one of the nicest things about fluoride in the water, it's a benefit to lower-income families in your community. These are people that cannot afford to go to the dentist all the time, they may not have the best nutrition at home, they might not have, you know, they need to brush their teeth, and hopefully they do, but you're not seeing that. When they have fluoride in the water, that prevents cavities, prevents them from having to go to the dentist, and, you know, having infections, creating problems. I am working with a group of dentists from the County Dental Association and with some people from the county health department to get the truth out about fluoride and the benefits of fluoride. They are concerned, I'm concerned, I was a pharmacist, I've dealt with, I've dispensed and sold fluoride for 38 years, I see the benefits of it, I know it's safe, I've never, I've worked downstate, I worked in Colorado, most of my time has been in Marquette County on the west, on the east side, west side and east side. I never knew a dentist or a doctor who was against it, not a one, they all prescribed, I never knew one dentist who was against it. They all know that fluoride works. I got notes all over here. Be aware, when they come in, when people come in and tell you the bad things about fluoride, what they won't tell you is how much fluoride was used in their studies. The studies that we have been seeing, when they say how bad it is, what it does-
Sorry, Mr. Campana, your time has run up.
Okay. It's much more, higher quantities.
Seeing two weeks. Do we have anyone else for public comment?
No, we all want to get out of here. Chelsea Wilkinson, room at the inn, 447 West Washington. I just wanted to come up and thank you, and I was getting teary-eyed back there, I really didn't expect this much of a showing, so I appreciate your commitment, and I look forward to working on this amendment together. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing none, public comment is now closed, which brings us to comments from the commission. I'm going to start tonight with Pro Tim Schlegel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not going to rehash everything tonight, but I think that what we saw tonight was a great representation of Marquette as a community and how much we do care for our neighbors. I look forward to how things are going to be hashed out in this ordinance. I want to thank city staff for bringing so much of this to light, you got to start somewhere, and tonight was, I think, a great step in the right direction. I know, and again, it's been said a number of times tonight, that our police department does a fine job, I know that they've, the incidences that they've encountered have continued to go up exponentially, and it's just, it's something that we need to get, we need to get some best practices and some things in place that are going to make sure that we're doing right by each other. Jay, when the topic of the baseball fields were brought up as part of an option for a dog park, at no point in time would you see anybody with their right mind allow the loose dogs to be around an area where you'd have hundreds of kids potentially for a few hours a day, and please know that we're going to, we keep, a summer option would be completely fenced in space, at least that's what I would hope for, and it would be better monitored. But I could tell you that between your group and another group that occupies that space, which is owned by Border Light and Power, I got run over by like a Mack truck in about 24 hours of just walking the property, and I was really upset, because it wasn't because it wasn't the best area for adoption like that, but it was two people that I've known for 30-plus years that I considered close friends that basically were ready to recall me for even- that basically were ready to recall me for even bringing up such a topic at that, uh, at that piece of property. I couldn't believe it. So please know that, um, uh, it's much more well thought out than what somebody might be saying because they didn't, uh, uh, do me a courtesy of asking about what type of, uh, entity or, or, or facility or recreation space we're going to have, hopefully. So, um, I look forward to working with city staff and with many members of the community. Um, and I hope that maybe you would even consider, uh, your 10 cents in, in bringing in your, uh, your, your thoughts as far as when things move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just two things I guess I'm going to hit on. First, I'd like to thank everyone that came and spoke here today, or at least came and just watched, but for also sticking around for the entirety of the meeting. A lot of you, I can tell just from your comments, have a lot of passion and, uh, you know, we have a lot of city boards and committees that would absolutely love some of that passion and energy. And it's a really great way to get involved with the community. I, just throwing it out there, casing you, you know, specifically looking at some of you from, uh, NMU here. I mean, I, it was my senior year at NMU when I ran for the commission. I got elected at 23. It's acceptable as a young person to be involved in city government, I promise. Highly encourage you to do it. Only other thing I wanted to mention, because I think I forgot to bring it up at the last meeting. I, uh, was nominated and appointed to the Michigan Municipal League Foundation's Board of Directors. I think I'm technically supposed to actually get inducted or something in May, but yeah. That's all I had.
Thank you. We're almost to that point of the year where the City Commissioner says our two favorite words, budget season. Nobody likes to talk about money around here, me included. Maybe some of the numbers nerds, but, um, ultimately I bring it up and I, I say these things because if you look back at our consent agenda, if you look at so many of our agendas, there's been so many budget amendments. And it's something I want each and every one of us to kind of keep in mind as we sit here and we think about, uh, you know, finances and which way we're going in the future. And oftentimes we, we say things like, uh, you know, in a couple of years, we're going to be in a much better spot. Couple of years, we're going to be in a much better spot. Just remember, things change. And as we are looking at the budget, I know we have very capable people that, that inform us on that and really keep that, um, you know, kind of at the tip top of where it needs to be. Just remember, things are getting expensive in this country. And costs of goods have been rising for far longer than tariffs have been going on and off and on and off. So if we go back to, to just COVID times 2019, uh, you know, our inflation numbers for everything that we bet out seems to be something that we can't control and figure out. So, uh, we, we have a duty to, to make sure that we are understanding that when we discuss budgets. Um, and we have a, a duty to make sure that we understand our priorities of, of what we're using that money for. And I, I bring that up because not just my street, but many streets around the city of Marquette are blighted. And we have to start really focusing on our infrastructure. And as we talk about doing awesome things, like, uh, you know, finding a dog park and a potential dog park. And I applaud Commissioner Schlegel for, for doing, it's, it's amazing. And I think we're going to have an awesome response to the dog park. I don't want it to take away from, uh, city staff time and, and potentially budgetary concerns that we have for fixing, you know, really big municipal concerns and, and, and issues with roads and water lines and things like that. So I urge everyone to, to just kind of keep those things in mind as we, as we discuss things in the future and, and know that we, we still have very tight screws around here. And, and that's not going to change for, for quite some time, most likely. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
I have no comments this evening.
Commissioner Kelly?
I wasn't going to say this, but here I go. About a month ago or so, a constituent sent out an email to the City Commission saying he had a problem. And I met the constituent out at the place where he was having a problem, heard what his concerns were, brought it to city management. They directed me to the right person and met with the city staffer who handled it. And we came up with a compromise. The constituent didn't get exactly what he wanted. The city didn't get exactly what they wanted. I knew this was a good compromise because nobody was happy. I'm sure everybody in this room isn't going to be happy with what we do. We're trying to do our best here. We really are.
Mr. Larson?
Only comment tonight is I certainly appreciate the very robust discussion and turnout that we've had as far as, uh, making public, you know, your voice is heard. I think it's an important aspect of local government is where you can actually come and, uh, talk to your folks directly, you know, here in front of you. So it's an important piece of the process and appreciate everybody coming.
Thank you. I have a little bit, uh, as with everyone else, thank you all for coming. We need to hear from the public on every issue from every side in order to make an informed decision. We all have our opinions, but we try to leave them at the wayside as much as we can for the good of the people. And so it's always important to hear from everyone on every issue. So thank you all for coming. I did want to point out, uh, that it is currently the 10th annual citywide Easter egg hunt going on throughout the entire city. I know it's a little bit off of the mood that we've been in today. But this is a hunt that's for everyone, kids, adults, families. There were 12 eggs out. I just checked and there are four eggs left. So everyone's been doing a really good job. It's only been open today. So if you want to find when there's four more eggs to be found around. And then on Saturday morning, they do have the 10:30 AM Children's Easter Egg Hunt down out at Presque Isle by the Presque, or by the Band Shell that is currently there. So thank you. With that, I will kick it over to comments from our city manager.
Thank you. I think, just wanted to kind of start this off with, uh, being in local government is a tough job, not just, uh, not from city staff perspective, but more along the city commission. And having to make tough decisions and having to consider all residents and all community members is not easy to always balance. So these discussions, um, while sometimes they feel a little bit awkward, um, in, in the public, the room is getting really hot, um, those kinds of things. And, um, it is something that's necessary and, um, is really welcome in our, our staff discussions as well. So this was incredibly helpful and healthy, I think, to have these discussions. So thank you for the guidance and thank you for the community to, to help get us there as well. So, um, spring is, is coming, I promise. But, uh, we are still dealing with a little bit of weather and some ground cover with our, our snow. And so, uh, normally we have the, the starting discussions and the planning for curbside brush and leaf pickup and then our compost drop off and our household rubbish drop off sites, um, opening. Those are being pushed back by a, a couple of weeks. So please, I'm not going to necessarily announce all of them right now. But you have some time to get the snow melted and talk to Mother Nature. But, uh, pay attention to the Public Works, um, page and also show it, social media for those announcements for those dates, um, because they're, they're coming up. So, um, you won't miss curbside drop off just yet. But the rubbish site and the compost drop off sites, um, are being postponed a little bit too, but will be open in April. So, um, please pay attention to that or give us a call. And then I did just want to touch on the Michigan Municipal League Foundation because it is a, a pretty big deal, um, to have some representation on there and at the MML board as well. So the Michigan Municipal League Foundation supports innovative work through partnerships, grants and programming that creatively and intentionally brings these people together and builds community wealth. And the, the foundation also provides sponsorships and project support for various municipalities throughout the state of Michigan. And it is a, incredibly important to have UP representation, but also Marquette city representation. This isn't the only board that we have Marquette, uh, City Commissioners on as well. There are other various boards and committees through the MML, um, that they sit on as well. So we are working to find ideas, um, from our peers and from other leading, um, cities and, and experts through representation on these boards. And I know that, I think Commissioner Otway, you're on one. I think we have a couple of others as well. Mayor Hanley. And I think, I want to say that there's some interest from other boards too, or other commissioners. So, uh, we are working for you and, um, love to talk about that involvement at some point. So that is all for now. Thank you.
With that, we are adjourned at 8:15 PM.